It's 5 o'clock. Larry, why don't you go ahead and bring it to order?
Okay, this is a special meeting of the Long Beach Building Commission. And I forgot what day yes it is.
21st.
Or 21, 21. And the purpose of the meeting was to discuss the change in material for the Fortman property or 2826 Lake Shore Drive. The background is that the Fortmans along with two other, three other property owners had requested a permit last year. We granted that permit at a special meeting on November 6th of last year with the caveat that they get with the town council and get resolved the issue of using the town's land for access and resolution of some other legal matters. It wasn't a condition of the permit, but I mean, it wasn't a requirement of the permit, but it was a condition of the permit. As Chris said, we don't, we can't require somebody, we're not giving something in order to get something, I guess is what, what the term would be. Is that correct, Chris?
Well, I guess ultimately, we're, we're working on parallel things here. And just to so the record is clear, the permits have nothing to do with any other matters that involved any of the parties or the town. So these are, these stand alone, each item stands alone, and that's how the town, as well as the parties are approaching them.
Okay. So our purpose here today is to look at the changes that the homeowner had made in the structure of the shore protection. And I mean, there's no question that it's a mess. You could see by these pictures, and it's actually gotten worse since these pictures were taken. The proposal is to use these, which we talked about last meeting, which is a HESCO system. These are, I don't know if anybody's familiar with a gabion wall. I call them gabion. I don't know if that's the right term, but it's a metal cage that's filled with some type of aggregate, and it's temporary by nature. This happens to be a steel, a metal cage that has a sandbag type material in it, and then would be filled with aggregate to protect their property. The homeowners realize that this is temporary in nature, and that it is not a permanent solution. This is, what we're looking at now is the drawing. You can see this line if you follow my cursor. This is the line where we had given them a permit based on, underneath all these white cloud looking things is where the HESCO people had white, I suppose for lack of a better term, whited out or erased the stone. And then their system is proposed to be set here, which is behind this line, which was the natural ordinary high watermark before. So that's really the crux of why we're here.
And these HESCO, this HESCO product, basically they're glorified sandbags, correct?
Well, they're not really, I mean, yes, they're bags. You can see here, Bob, if you look, I can zoom in on this. There's a metal structure to the, to the, to the bag, if you want to call it a bag. There's a, there's a cage, a metal cage. The bags are set inside the metal cage. It's expanded like an accordion. And then the aggregate is pumped or set into these areas. You can see these guys working on them right here. Let's see if I can find a better one. No, that's all I have from them that they gave me. What I showed you guys last week was actually from the HESCO site.
And the plan is to run them across both properties, the town stop and in front of their deck?
Yes.
So I guess I would ask a question is, if we were to approve this, is there any reason why, looking at that site plan, that right at the first HESCO bag to the east of the deck, that HESCO all couldn't go back along the side of the deck and then move the protection to the town prop, a little, town stop a little further back, so that we can bring stairs down when we decide we're going to put stairs in?
You know, Bob, I don't know that. These stairs, unfortunately, these pictures don't show these stairs. There might be one here. Let's see if I can find it. You can see where this, this stair is.
Yep.
Public access stair.
Right.
Would start at this area where my cursor is, and come towards us, so to say. So at this point now, this whole area is eroded further back.
I would say, Larry, based on my understanding and kind of seeing it all the time, right? The way it's drawn right now, you could easily get over it with a set of stairs, and nothing that's currently there would have to be rebuilt. But if there was any concern about it at all, we could ju- adjust the barrier system back further away from the lake to provide access over it and down the rest of the stairs. I think the way it's drawn right now, it toes into the back of that, that concrete seawall that's the return there. So I think it would kind of, it would terminate as it's drawn today, right where the very end of the stairs are. And so you'd almost be under it today.
Okay.
So you could easily come over it.
I'd like to make sure that we try to maximize any beach at stop 29, when hopefully the lake does finally go down, and hopefully some sand reaccumulates there.
Right.
So, so this is, if there's discussion inclined, and then inclination to approve it, then you can always make it, that is one of the contingencies or, or requirements, or conditions of approval.
This is probably the best shot of what, the bags would be in front of this area, and then they angle back towards the wood. You can't really see the wood stairs that are here. This extension of this steel sheet piling, this up in the air, those, that platform, which is right here, ran right straight to that. So the bags will be back in this area right here.
Yeah.
But if, if you use that diagram that you had up earlier, and the other comment, which you guys probably don't want to hear it, but I, I still say, whatever that structure is, it's definitely not a deck, but I'm not going to use that word. But if you bring that other, that other picture that you had, that says the temporary barrier footprint, and I think, and maybe I'm asking Bob, but it looked to me like, oh, there you go. If you can, it looked to me like, I think what, Bob, you're saying is that we see where it says the, the name across it, and they have those bags in kind of like a pink color. And right below that, you have that white color after you go past that structure. And I, I was wondering, is that what you're saying, that maybe those bags could be in that white area? Because as you're looking at it, what, what the gentleman said, that if you go to the far right, and you go to the last white area, I believe that black squiggly thing is the end of the concrete. So then the bags would go right into.
Pardon? This is concrete right here.
Yes, yes, I understand.
Would die into the concrete.
The concrete goes all the way to down. Larry, if you move your X, it goes down to the bottom, right?
Right.
We can move it back further. Right now, the, the blocks are roded into that white area, so it could be angled back to provide additional beach at the stop 29 area.
Because, because just to try to satisfy on our, on our property, it would definitely be below the natural ordinary high watermark, because the footnote on this page, I'm not crazy about, at the bottom where he says the natural ordinary high watermark is 584. And I don't know if that's, that's something that, that we're abiding by, but with, with our bags being below, I think that would be a lot closer also to, if you can, if you can see it on your sketch, that just about through the middle of that white plume, or whatever you call it, if you go to the far right, you see a couple jig jag little lines that are on the other side of the concrete. And if you can see those lines that are going through the white, that's actually 106. And this would put our, our bags pretty much at 106. See, right about where you have your arrow, Larry. You see, oh, that's who's arrow, is that a different arrow here? No, that lower.
I'm understanding that.
Can you see it? If I do it, you can't see my arrow?
I understand that. This line right here is the line that we asked them to be behind, which is the 584 mark in November, when we gave them a permit previously. That's what this, this line that's not straight.
I understand that.
Given, given that these, the system is blocks, I, obviously it's going to create some structural issues if you try to put a bend in it. But can it go at a 90 degree angle? Does, does this structure, does this system allow you to do that?
Well, I can't speak for the installer, nor can I speak for the manufacturer, but anytime, especially with what you've got going on here, anytime you keep these where they can be as tight as possible, is going to be to the advantage of the town as well as the, the Fortmans. Because as soon as you start to, in this area, if you were to take these and try to start to turn them, you're going to open up the, the area here, which you really don't want to do. So it would have to be very gradual, just like he shows it, where he's very gradual turning them back towards this area.
Or could you go straight down, you know, right along the, the side of the deck? With, again, that's, I guess that's something we have to ask the installers.
Well, one of the problems too, Bob, is this is all eroded now. So it may be that he is going to turn this more or faster than he is here, but there would be a limit. I mean, just from common sense and working around shore protection, there would be a limit as to how he can turn these.
But I, I think what, what Bob is saying, that if where that arrow is right now, and if at that point, you drop a couple of bags, or whatever they're called, in that exact same position, and you drop them down, and then when they're down there, say you put two down along the staircase, and then nothing's bent yet, it's, it's just been lowered, and then across, you, you have a straight line. So it's the same thing. There is no bend.
We have to talk to the installer. Nobody on this call that I'm aware of is, is capable of making a decision as to whether it can be turned or angled.
Hey, this is Dan Lupiani. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Where are these bags relative to where their army seawall is? Are they up against it, or are they behind?
See this, where it says existing steel sheet piling?
Yeah, I'm not able to see it too well, because I'm on my phone, unfortunately.
And this is Tim. It's well behind or to the south of.
Hold on, Tim. Hold on. You see where this red line is?
Yes.
That is the approximate location of the steel sheet piling.
So this is really against, Tim, this is against your little pagoda there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's down here where it says deck.
And, and then just so I can understand this, this, what you're showing in the picture is the wash, the, the sidewash out that has happened over time, between Tim's property and the steps, how the water has come in on the side, on the flanks, so to speak?
Right. That's exactly what it is.
So basically, you have a permit request to put in temporary structure, and these things are suggested to last for five years, according to the information we've got, right?
On their website, I think, I believe so.
So it's not, not a seawall, it's not a revetment, it's a temporary structure, and the town has put in temporary structures, sandbags, that has not required a permitting process.
That's correct. Not just the town, but all along the lakefront in those times when it's gotten bad. So I'm, see this pine tree right here?
Yeah.
It's actually on the town's property. At one time, these pine trees came across, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, these pine trees came across over in this area, and they've just fallen away.
Right.
And, and there's actually more erosion on, on the town property than there is on the Fortman's property. And that's by nature of this deck structure, holding back their, their, the erosion from getting further back on their property.
So procedurally, if the building commission signs off on this, the next step would be at tomorrow's town council meeting for the town council, to consider whether they're willing to let the Fortmans put this across the stop 29, in addition to their property, correct?
It is. And, and this is Chris, and another, you know, obviously the town council can put its own conditions on in addition to. So whatever, much like the building commission did before, and what, if you're inclined to approve it, it, everything's going to be subject to town council approval.
Sorry, I'm tipping here. Any, any other just questions or discussion?
I guess, I guess one thing I, what might be helpful is, Tim, if you could find out from the people who do this, can you put a 90 degree bend in these things? You know, can you, could you go straight back along the side of your deck? That might help the town council to say, yeah, that's good, we're maximizing the beach at stop 29.
Yeah, I can certainly ask.
I, I would, whether it's a 90 degree or not, I would suggest that, that, the temporary structure be put at the toe of the erosion. You know, there's no sense in putting it forward of the erosion, and I just can't put it landward of the erosion. So at this point in time, when this guy was here, that's probably where the erosion was.
Yep.
Was in this area. And now it's gotten back into this area. You know, over here, towards the Lupiani property, Dan's got a shot rock that's down in this area. And, and the permit there was, or the original permit was to clean that up, and Dan still wants to proceed with that. And I'm not sure how, Chris and I, I know you may not be able to talk about it now, but I think the Osbornes are in the same mode as that they were going to continue with the stone. But for this, yeah, these, this whole system won't do us, well, the town and the Fortman's much good, if a wave can crash over the top of it and then wash it back out into it. It's got to be placed at the toe of, whether they create their own toe after the bags are installed, or, you know, they, they go to the toe of, of the erosion area now.
Well, and I, I guess I'm, I'm thinking and looking at this, and I've been down there to look at it, although not lately, the town may not be in a huge hurry to rebuild those stairs at stop 29, given the fact that, you know, we've got all those tiebacks and, and the Army Corps seawall down there. I'm just not sure what the safety is for anybody going down there to enjoy the lake at stop 29, until this lake goes down and maybe some sand reaccumulates.
Right. I mean, I, I would suggest the same thing. I mean, if the park department came to us with a permit request to rebuild the stairs at stop 29, I would argue against it, because they're going to be, they're just going to be shot. One storm's going to come, and they're going to be gone. So I think you're right, Bob, until the sand, until we get some lower lake levels and the sand builds back up, there wouldn't be any sense in rebuilding those steps.
Yep.
And those steps and those walkways, even when we were kids in the 60s, traversed open gully areas under the, well, I mean, when my brother was a kid. I wasn't a kid until the 80s. So yeah, stop 29's always been a kind of a difficult stop. I don't know why, but it just happens to be where the seawalls are and where the, you know, the, the existing vegetation was, I guess. Any other questions or comments? I don't even know who's on here. Do you, can you tell who's on here?
Um, yeah, some, some of them just say iPad, but yeah, you know, do you want to have public comment before we make any kind of decision first, Larry, or do you want to wait later?
It's up to you. I mean, I, I certainly would, we could have public comment beforehand.
Larry, you just asked a question. Do we have a quorum?
Well, I see Joy, Bob, John Coker, and you. That's a quorum.
No, Pete?
No, Pete's still under the weather.
So I see Tom, Tom King has raised his hand. Tom, go ahead and unmute.
So I just have two questions.
I can't hear you. We can't hear you, Tom.
Heard you for a second, Tom, then you went off.
Hello?
Got you now.
Yeah.
It appears this meeting was just publicly noticed yesterday, correct?
No, it was two days ago. We, we followed the 48 hour rule.
Okay. I'll look at that. But also, I want to make sure that we do reference natural ordinary high watermark with, with respect to any proposed project here. And I'd also like to reference that, you know, the, the concept of the ordinary high watermark was again affirmed in the federal court just a few weeks ago, specifically referencing the Gunderson decision. So while I respect the toe of the seawall as a regulatory, regulatory point, as referenced by the Army Corps potentially, and the Indian Natural Resources, it does not speak to ownership, and where we actually have a right to do this type of work. So for the record, those are just the comments I'd like to make.
Okay. And I guess my, my thought is, is that these structures that they're proposing are glorified sandbags, which we haven't known in the past.
Just a statement for Tom King. Deanna puts it in the newspaper, and so we have to, we have to give them 48 hours notice.
Yeah.
Actually, I thought it was three days, but she met those time limits.
Any other, any other comments?
Anybody else have any comments?
Hello, Larry?
I can't see.
Go ahead, iPad 89.
Yeah, Jim and I would want to ask a couple of questions, please.
Sure.
Larry, you made a comment whether this even needs a permit. Could you clarify that?
I don't know that I said it didn't need a permit. I said, we gave them a permit in, in November 6th for the original work. And the question was whether or not this work is material and different, but has a very difference from what they were permitted for. And we decided that it certainly did.
So you, so what was referenced, and also Bob, was this is a temporary structure. And you referenced that in many parts of the town, and even the town has put up temporary structures without permits. Is that correct?
Yeah, and then we've sandbagged on an emergency basis across many areas.
Well, and this, this is Chris. That, one, I just want to make sure that, that the commission sticks to, public comment is public comment, and you guys have made. So, and two, that things that have been required to be permitted, the stance and position is that they have been permitted. And otherwise, the temporary structures, or sandbags, for instance, don't require them. So the, the, the decision is that this is akin to that.
So Mr. Willby, if I understand your comment, you're saying that this temporary structure does not need a permit. Is that correct?
I am not giving any advice based on public comment.
Larry, you referenced that, that the three properties that were looking to repair their seawalls, they were actually given permits on November 6th of last year. Is that correct?
Yes.
Have those permits been given a number, and have they been issued to the, to the people that wanted the permits?
No, that involves the town council. That's probably about all I can say about that.
Well, if, if they're changing their plans, and they've already been issued a permit, wouldn't they have to go through the permitting process again?
You know, that's not a question that I can answer, Jim.
All right. Well, those are questions that, that probably should be answered, and I understand Mr. Willoughby's stand, but I would hope that the building commission, and also the town council, when they're going to sort of consider this on Thursday, without a lot of people knowing about it, they should take this at a, at at least a studious pace of trying to, trying to look at all angles.
trying to look at all angles on this.
And, and just to add to that, just for clarity, not, not holding back from the building commission, my understanding is those permits were all issued subject to further approvals for access and/or use of town property. So those are the caveats with regard to those previous ones.
Yes, that's correct, Chris.
My last question, Larry, is that these, this system has been used in Beverly Shores, and I actually talked to a Beverly Shores property owner today, and he said that these bag systems have actually failed twice. Not, not that I'm suggesting that Mr. Vortman's installation would fail, but if, if they did fail on town property, will Mr. Vortman be responsible to replace the, the system on town property?
Uh, you know, that's, that again, Jim, that's above my pay grade.
All right, well, these are, these are questions that I would hope that all that are involved would consider, please.
And, and just out of, out of re- respect for the, the question, and not to get it in exchange, but in public comment, but I, I do think that those are questions appropriate for the town council, because they're the ones who have the authority to grant, um, access to, and, and would approve if approved, the Vortmans doing work on the town property. So the building commission wouldn't really control that, but noted, and I, and I do think that those are valid for the council to consider.
Well, I thank you, and I thank you, the building commission, uh, I know all of you are volunteers, and, uh, we appreciate the work that you do.
Thanks, Jim, any other, uh, public comment? Bob, again, I can't see hands, so.
Um, nobody else. So, so given the fact that there don't seem to be any public comments, or any other public comments, uh, I'd like to make a motion that, given the fact that these are temporary structures, I don't feel the building commission should stand in the way of their being installed, um, and that, um, this, as far as I'm concerned, can go to the town council today, at the meeting tomorrow.
I'll second that.
Joy Schmidt, any other dis- further discussion? All right, let's call for a vote. Uh, I can't see the hands, Bob, I.
I'll, I'll count them for you.
Okay, uh, all those in favor, aye, or raise your hand?
Aye.
Aye, that's three.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries three to one.
I don't believe that that's correct.
Yeah, Joe, I'll, I'll, I'll raise your issue for you. Joe and I were talking yesterday, and Joe raised the issue saying, uh, do we need a majority, or is it a major, and this is for Chris, do we need a majority of the people present, or do we need a majority of the building commission?
Well, you got four members voted out of five.
Right, did you, did you vote, Larry?
I only vote in tiebreakers.
Well, but.
Might be one.
Do we need, we have seven, we have six members of the, uh, building commission, and we have five people present. So Chris, are you there? Hello, Chris? We lost him.
Um, I mean.
I believe you need four, you need four to carry anything.
We, we, we really need the legal opinion. I'm going to try and call Chris, see where he went.
Okay. Anybody else have any comment while Bob's doing that?
I believe, though, you can vote, can't you, Larry?
Yeah, I can, usually, at least when I talk to, I don't know, I think it was, that I would normally vote to break a tie.
Hey, Larry, did Lou Mellon vote?
Lou doesn't, he doesn't have a vote.
Okay.
Well, there we go. Chris, where are you? I don't see his, um, computer on here now. Damn.
Bob, I think Larry needs to vote.
I think so, I, I would say, Larry, why don't you vote?
Then I vote four, so that would put us at four to one.
Yeah. And I, you know, I'm not sure that that's true, that you only vote in case of a tie, I think you get to vote.
I, I, somebody told me then, it might have been my dog.
He gets to vote, he gets to vote.
I think so.
None of that tie stuff, Larry, you can't sit on the fence.
No, somebody told me that was the legal deal, was that I was not to vote unless it was a, but you, hey, you.
Oh, here, here, Chris, Chris is coming back.
Our still advise.
He should be here shortly. Hey, Chris, can you hear me? No, hold on, he's still connecting. Hey, Chris? Chris, can you hear me? Chris?
Yeah, I'm here, yeah, what a time to drop, right?
So, so here's, here's the question, we, we had a vote, uh, we voted on this, the vote was three to one, Larry doesn't think he's able to vote unless it's a tie. So first question is, do we need a majority of the entire building commission, or the major, a majority of the people present?
It's, it's the majority that are present.
Okay, then when we don't have an issue, so Larry, you don't have to vote. It passes three to one.
Yes, he does, we want to know where he stands.
Yeah, I voted for it, so, I can, I mean, I'll tell you, you guys usually know where I stand, usually by the how I'm talking, so. Uh, all right, well, that's fine. Uh, any other discussion? And then this, this will go with you guys, you guys are meeting tomorrow, right, Bob?
Building commission has this on the agenda, along with a few other things that have been added.
Okay. I think we're all set.
All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Joy? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cool. Night, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. Bye.
Very much appreciated.